Evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 28th, 2020 Legislative Session of the Salisbury City Council. I will now call the meeting to order. Please join me now in a moment of silent meditation or prayer. Thank you. This evening, we have two proclamations, and I'll turn it over now to Deputy City Administrator Andy Kitro. Mr. Kitro, it's all yours.
Great, I'm excited to have a couple proclamations here to read this evening. Our first, I'm going to go ahead with World Migration. So whereas migratory birds are some of the most beautiful and easily observed wildlife that shares our communities and many citizens recognize and welcome migrant migratory songbirds as symbolic harvesters of the spring. And whereas these migrant species also play an important economic role in our communities by controlling insect pests and generating millions in recreational dollars statewide. And whereas migratory birds and their habitats are declining throughout America, facing a growing number of threats on their migration routes and are in both in their summer and winter homes. And whereas public awareness and concern are crucial components of migratory bird conservation. And citizens who are enthusiastic about birds, informed about threats they face and empowered to help address those threats, can directly contribute to maintaining healthy bird populations. And whereas since 1993, World Migratory Bird Day, formerly International Migratory Bird Day, as created by the Smithsonian Migratory Bird Center, has become a primary vehicle for focusing public attention on the nearly 350 species and travel between nesting habitats in our communities and throughout North America, and then wintering grounds in South and Central America, Mexico, the Caribbean, and the Southern United States. And whereas while my World Migratory Bird Day is officially held each year on the second Saturday in May, its observance is not limited to a single day. The event planners are always encouraged to schedule activities on the dates best suited to the presence of both migrants and celebrants. Those events have traditionally included large gatherings in town squares, community centers, schools, parks, nature centers, and wildlife refugees to learn about birds and actions to conserve them and to simply have fun. And whereas Bird City Maryland is hosting a virtual event, October 10th, October 8th through the 10th, 2020, in celebration of the World Migratory Bird Days 2020 theme, Birds Connect Our World, which is anticipated to include highlights of three Maryland bird cities, La Plata, Annapolis, and Salisbury. And as well as presentation from the War Museum of Wild Fowl Art located in Salisbury, Maryland. Now therefore, I, Andy Kitser, Deputy City Administrator, city of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim October 8th, 2020 as World Migratory Bird Day. And we are fortunate enough to have our sustainability coordinator who's helped put on part of this event and instrumental in this whole celebration. So I'd like to turn it over to Alyssa Hastings, please.
Thank you, Deputy City Administrator Andy. Thank you, Council President and members of the council for having me tonight. So I just wanted to provide a little bit of context for this proclamation. We're celebrating World Migratory Bird Day as part of the city's Bird City Maryland application. So because of this application, we will now be a bee city, a tree city, and now a bird city. So this is just one more little, you know, certification for our sustainability programs. And it's really a great effort to show what we care about here in Salisbury. So there's only two other bird cities in Maryland, and we will be the first on the eastern shore. So that's something that we're very proud of and very excited about. So why is this important? Well, obviously, the eastern shore is absolutely critical for so many bird, for so many bird and their habitats. We have lost over 2.9 billion birds since 1950 in the North America alone. So it's a, it's a big problem, and we really just want to make people aware that Salisbury is doing everything that we can to help provide habitat and make sure that our land use policies are sustainable and so that we can keep enjoying all the birds that we love in our backyards and our city park. And lastly, part of our bird to the application is we're going to choose an official city of Salisbury bird. So that's actually a contest that's happening right now, and it's going through next Saturday. So basically, we worked with the Tri-County Bird Club to choose five birds that we thought were very emblematic of Salisbury and birds that you'd be able to see in your backyard or in city park. So I'm personally rooting for the great blue heron, but there's lots of great birds on the list. So please go to City of Salisbury, just type in Google, City of Salisbury, vote for your city bird. It'll come right up to the poll and vote for the signature bird for Salisbury. So thank you all, and thanks for having me tonight.
Thank you, Alyssa. All right, so I'm President Heath, I'm going to move on to our second proclamation. This is in regards to on Fire Prevention Week. So whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, with citizens at greatest risk in their homes. And whereas United States Fire Departments in 2018 responded to more than 379,600 home fires and civilian lives lost totaled 2,790. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying and reported home fires in half. And whereas cooking is the leading cause of home fires in the United States, Fire Departments in 2018 responded to more than 1,000, 192,700 cooking-related fires. And whereas two of every five home fires started in the kitchen with 31% of those fires caused by unintended cooking. And more than half the non-fatal home cooking fire injuries reported occurred when victims tried to fight the fire themselves. And whereas all residents should stay in the kitchen when frying food on the stove top, keep anything that can catch fire away from the stove top. And whereas all residents should also keep a three-foot kid-free zone around the cooking areas because children under age of five face a higher risk of non-fire burns associated with cooking than being burned in a cooking fire. And whereas City of Salisbury firefighters are dedicated to the prevention of all fires as well as reducing the occurrence of home fires and related injuries, continue to provide prevention and protection education to the city residents who have been and continue to be receptive to learning how to increase their own personal safety, especially in their homes. And whereas citizens who have developed and practiced a home fire escape plan are better prepared and therefore more likely to survive a home fire. And the plans should include teaching children how to escape on their own in the event that adults cannot help them during a fire emergency. And whereas the City of Salisbury is committed to ensuring the safety and security of its citizens and will be celebrating National Fire Prevention Week 2020 with this year's theme, Serve Up Fire Safety in the Kitchen, which effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. Now therefore, I, Andy Kitser, Deputy City Administrator of the City of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim October 4th through 10th, 2020 as Fire Prevention Week 2020. And what I'd like to do at this time is turn it over to Deputy Chief Gladwell, who can tell you a little bit more what they have in store for that week. Chief?
Chief, we can't hear you.
Still can't hear you. Chief, we can't hear you.
Can you turn your volume up? No, now you're on mute. There you go.
Sure.
Right.
Not yet.
So I can go ahead and jump in and try to keep this going while Chief works on that. So this year has certainly been a challenge for us with COVID-19. But our main mission is to continue to deliver fire safety conversations and talks, especially in the school system. So this year, we've taken a new approach to it with the help of Shelby Gardner, who is online also with us tonight and who is our newest volunteer recruit coordinator. Her along with Chief Gladwell and many other members of our department have taken it up to creating virtual learning. So they have developed videos that deliver the same type of material messages that we would deliver in the school system. We are going to upload those and deliver those to the school systems so the kids can still work on fire safety messages, things like exit drills in the home, smoke alarms, fire extinguishers, the infamous stop, drop, and roll. So the message is still going to get out to the kids. And Chief Gladwell, right now, is working with some of the schools and to afford us the opportunity to visit the schools where the kids are in an outdoor setting. So they still get to see the firefighters, they'll still get to see a fire truck. But some of the things are going to be done through the virtual learning. So we're, we're excited about this opportunity. But it certainly isn't the same as going into the school system and interacting with the kids, so.
Thank you, Chief. Sorry, Deputy Chief Gladwell, we that's okay. We, we always have a backup plan. Plan Bs are good. So thank you again. Appreciate it. Alyssa, thank you very much. It's exciting. We were the first, one of the first for the other, the treaty, weren't we, on the eastern shore?
The bee city, we were the first.
Oh, the bee city, that's what it was. Pretty soon, we'll be the city for everything for the environment, and I'm all for it. Thank you. At this time, I'll call for a motion in a second to adopt a legislative agenda. Second. Is Jackson, Mr. Boda. Before we take the vote, I'd like to make a note that Ms. Blake is not going to be with us this evening. So there will only be four votes. I'll now call to vote, all those in favor of adopting legislative agenda, please signify by saying yea. If you oppose, say nay. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Is Jackson?
Aye.
This is Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The vote is four zero. I want to attain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move. Second.
For Boda, Ms. Jackson. Good evening, Mrs. Nichols.
Good evening, Mr. Heath, everybody. On the consent agenda tonight, we have the September 8th, 2020 Work Session Minutes, September 14th, 2020 Legislative Session Minutes. Resolution Number 3062, approving the reappointment of Amy Hager to the Sustainability Advisory Committee for the term ending September 2023, and that is approving the appointment, not the reappointment. Pardon me. Resolution Number 3063, declaring that Spicy Chicken LLC is eligible to receive enterprise benefits for their property located at 107 Williams Port Circle in Salisbury. And Resolution Number 3064, accepting the donation of a new walk-in freezer and payment for a rented freezer from the Salisbury Zoo Commission for the Salisbury Zoological Park, and that's it.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Nichols. I now call the motion, all those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Is Jackson?
Aye.
This is Gregory?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The vote is four to zero. I'd like to, I know Dr. Hager is on the, on the line. Thank you very much for re-upping. We appreciate it. We appreciate your support. I would also like to thank the Zoo Commission for that donation of that freezer. That's a necessary thing. I know that they're struggling to get the new one in because the lead times are apparently pretty bad. So and I just as a reminder, Purdue has donated a temporary freezer. And I'd like to thank them again, too. And the freezer is still in service and will be until the new freezer gets there. So thanks to Purdue. I want to attain a motion to approve the award of bids. So move.
Second.
For Boda and Ms. Jackson. Good evening, Mrs. Miller.
Good evening, Mr. Heath. Good evening, Council. Thank you. This is an award of bid for requests for proposal number A-21-101. It's Architectural and Engineering Support Services. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Infrastructure and Development to solicit proposals from qualified and experienced firms to provide architectural and engineering services on an as-needed basis will match the most qualified professionals for the size and type of projects contemplated. Generally intended for small projects under $100,000, being considered for immediate evaluation in a time-sensitive manner. The Department of Procurement did follow standard competitive bidding practices by publicly posting the solicitation on both the City of Salisbury's procurement portal and on the state of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace. A total of 24 vendors submitted proposals by the due date and time of August 18th, 2020, at 2:30 PM. The vendors' technical proposals were evaluated by committee according to the criteria established in the solicitation document. And pricing was open for the 15 proposals that received a minimum qualifying score of at least 70% of the technical points available. The departmental recap provides, the departmental memo provides a recap of the evaluation criteria and the resulting composite score. To obtain the most qualified firms for the various tasks, the solicitation documents specified that the city may choose to contract with multiple firms if it's in the best interest of the city to do so. The city has chosen to select the top five most highly rated vendors. These five had well-conceived, detail-driven project approaches that indicated areas of expertise for which the firm would be best suited to undertake the necessary work. While the city could choose to contract with any number of firms, selecting too large of an A&E Support Service Team would result in less work for all firms and increased project and contract management time and expense to city staff. The procurement department does concur with the recommendations submitted by the Department of Infrastructure and Development and thereby request council's approval to award this RFP, number A-21-101, to the following vendors, Davis, Owen, and Friddell, GHD Incorporated, Flora Teeter Landscape Architects, Johnson, Murmuran, and Thompson Incorporated, and Vista Design Incorporated. If the award of this solicitation is approved by city council, contracts will be issued to these five vendors and purchase orders will be issued on a task order basis. The Department of Infrastructure and Development has budgeted approximately $300,000 in fiscal year '21 for A&E Support Services resulting from this award.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Mr. Boda?
No, no questions or comments.
Thank you. Is Jackson?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Mrs. Gregory?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Miller, I'll, I'll now poll the council to see if we should move this forward. Oh, we have, do you have one more?
That was it, right? This is the only one.
All right, I will poll the council now to approve the award of bids and move it forward. All those in favor of the award of bids, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Is Jackson?
Aye.
This is Gregory?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The award of bids is approved. The vote is four to zero. Thank you, Mrs. Miller.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
I'll now entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2614 for the second reading.
So move.
Second. Is Jackson, Ms. Gregory, Mrs. Gregory? Mr. Tillman? You're muted, Mr. Tillman.
Sorry about that.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I'm going to do a comprehensive reread this evening. Following the first reading, my office made a number of, you know, grammatical and spelling corrections, and I want to do a full reading as amended for the benefit of the council and the public.
Thank you.
This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend the following sections of Title 13 Public Services of the Salisbury Municipal Code, Chapter 13.01.030, 1302.02.020B, Point 3, and Point 7, and Point 8, 13.02.050, 13.02.060E, 13.02.070, 13.02.080, and 13.02.090, to revise the comprehensive connection charges definition and applications. Whereas the ongoing application administration enforcement of the City of Salisbury Municipal Code demonstrates the need for periodic review, evaluation, and amendment. And whereas a water and sewer rate study was performed in 2018 in which comprehensive connection charges were evaluated, and whereas the study recommended adopting an equity-based fee instead of a capacity fee and central line fee. And whereas the equity-based fee is recommended to be called a connection fee and replaces the capacity fee in the central line fee. And whereas the Director of the Department of Infrastructure Development recommends other modifications to the Comprehensive Connection Charges Code to clarify the intent of various fees and programs now therefore be enacted and ordained by the City of Salisbury. The chapters 13.01.030, 13.02.0.020B, Point 3, Point 7, and Point 8, and 13.02.050, and 13.02.060E, and 13.02.070, and 13.02.080, and 13.02.090. Of the City of Salisbury Municipal Code be amended as follows. Chapter 1301, Abbreviations and Definitions, under 13.01.030 Definitions, it will read, "Connection Fee is based on the number of EDUs that the customer is projected to generate at total buildout of the development project. It is calculated by multiplying the connection unit fee by the projected EDU value, average daily water usage for a particular development project. The fee shall be charged for each new connection to the city's system regardless of location to pay for equity in the city's utility systems." Connection Unit Fee is a unit rate based on equity value of the water and sewer systems expressed in dollars per EDU. Capital Improvement Plan means a five-year plan showing the city's capital outlay needs for the water treatment plant, water distribution system, wastewater collection system, and wastewater treatment plant, and setting forth a plan for financing those needs. Comprehensive Connection Charge means the charge to new customers connecting to the system that includes the connection fee, infrastructure reimbursement fee, sewer lateral and water meter tap fee. Infrastructure Reimbursement Fee is based on the number of EDUs that the customer is projected to generate at total buildout of the development project. It is calculated by multiplying the infrastructure reimbursement unit fee by the projected EDU value, the average daily water usage for a particular development project. Infrastructure Reimbursement Unit Fee is intended to recover the costs of system extensions to a service area outside of the central system. These fees will typically be the backbone of the new service area and may include major water and sewer transmission mains, pumping stations, and water storage tanks. The fee is a unit rate based on the cost of the system extension expressed in dollars per EDU. The system extension may have been performed by the city or a private entity. Sewer lateral and water meter tap fee is intended to cover the cost of tapping the water and sewer mains and providing the lateral service water meter corporation stop, clean out, and stub out for the water and sewer connections. Under Chapter 13.02, General Provisions, Connection to the City's Water and Sewer Mains, Section 13.02.020, the Legislative Intent Goals, the goals of the Comprehensive Connection Charge are as follows. New or increased water or sewer usage will be charged for equity in the existing system through a connection fee. The infrastructure reimbursement fees are to be indexed yearly in order to cover the cost of inflation impacting the cost of past improvements. The basis of the proposed methodology for the connection fee is the value of is that the value of service is equal to all users. Under 13.02.050, Responsibilities, the Director of Infrastructure and Development shall develop and maintain a policy and procedures handbook which provides detailed information, procedures, and examples of the Comprehensive Connection Charge, Infrastructure Reimbursement, and other relevant development policies. Paragraph 2, Review and Update, the City's Water and Sewer Master Plan Periodically. Paragraph 3, Provide Recommended Adjustments for Annual Variances in the Comprehensive Connection Charge Structure in Coordination with the Director of Finance to the Office of the Mayor and the and the City Council Honor Before March 15th of each year. The proposed Comprehensive Connection Charge Structure, if approved, shall become effective on July 1st of that same year. The specific recommendation at a minimum shall include the connection unit fee based on the value of the utility systems and the capacity of the systems. Under subsection B, the Director of Finance shall deposit payments for the Comprehensive Connection Charges in an appropriate special fund to ensure that the fees and all interest accruing to the special fund are designated for the improvements reasonably attributable to newer increased growth and are expended to reasonably benefit the new or increased growth. 13.02.060, the general connection policies. Property owners requesting connection to the city's public water and/or sewer systems that are not located within the city's corporate limit shall either submit a request for annexation if the property is contiguous with the city's corporate limit, or execute a pre-annexation agreement if the property is not contiguous to the city's corporate limit. Under 13.02.070, Comprehensive Connection Charge, the overview and general policy section under A1, the Comprehensive Connection Charge includes the connection fee, infrastructure reimbursement fee, sewer lateral fee, and water meter tap fee. The Comprehensive Connection Charge for all customers will be calculated under the methodologies discussed in this chapter. Subsection A, the connection fee will apply to all new or increased water and/or sewer usage. The connection fee is based on the number of EDUs that the user is projected to generate. B, the infrastructure reimbursement fee will vary depending on a user's location, the required infrastructure that must either be installed or was previously installed for service to that user. At subsection C, the sewer lateral and/or water meter tap fee is based on the size and installation complexity of the user's water and/or sewer connections. Two, the connection fee and infrastructure reimbursement fee are the respective amounts of each fee that a property owner will pay for water and/or sewer services for a specific property, development project, redevelopment project, or change in water usage. The connection fee, the connection unit fee and infrastructure reimbursement unit fee are the respective amounts of each fee's cost per EDU. The infrastructure reimbursement unit fee will be indexed yearly in order to cover the cost of inflation impacting the cost of past improvements. Under paragraph 5, the extension of water and/or sewer mains outside the city's existing system may require that major infrastructure, i.e. pumping stations, water and sewer mains greater than eight inches in diameter, storage tanks, et cetera, be oversized to serve the needs of the service area as determined by the city. The city will identify the new service area to be served by extensions. The city will require a water and sewer plan and the estimated cost for the extension of the infrastructure. The city reserves the right to negotiate the property owner's payment in full or in part for capital improvement plan projects which are required to be constructed, either constructed earlier than planned due to the man, demands of proposed development projects. Subsequent adjustments in the infrastructure reimbursement fee may be required. Paragraph 8, the mayor and council may adopt a policy by separate resolution which would allow discounts, deferrals, and payment plans for the Comprehensive Connection Charge to encourage water and sewer usage that is consistent with the city's goals. Nine, all comprehensive connection charge fees shall be paid before the first water meter is charge fees shall be paid before the first water meter is set or sewer service is provided to the property by the city, whichever is the first to occur. Paragraph ten, the property owner shall pay the applicable Comprehensive Connection Charge fees when due for each phase of the development. Paragraph eleven, the Comprehensive Connection Charge fees for water and sewer service to a particular building unit shall be based on the unit rates in effect at the time that the fee is paid for that building unit so long as the time limit set forth in section thirteen point oh two point oh seven oh eight twelve has not expired. Under paragraph twelve, that was remains identical to the prior paragraph thirteen, so I'll not read that. And paragraph thirteen is identical to the prior paragraph fourteen. Then, under subsection B, connection fee. It will read paragraph one, the connection unit fee shall be based on the value of the utility system, the existing utility system debt, the amount of grants used to fund the utility system, and the existing capacity of the utility system. Paragraph two, newer increased water and or sewer usage by a property owner shall require the payment of a connection fee adjustment that is intended to to recover the capital costs of equity in the water and sewer system that are used by or reserved for new or increased usage. What used to be paragraph four now reads as paragraph three, the connection unit fee shall be calculated by determining the depreciated value of the utility system in terms of current cost for replacement for both water and sewer. The calculation is based on the value of the utility asset minus the credit from the outstanding debt or grant fund divided by the system capacity in equivalent dwelling units, EDU. What used to be paragraph five is now four, and it's it will read connection fees may be expressed in multiples and fractions of EDUs for various sized water meters using equivalent meters as defined by the American Waterworks Association Manual M one entitled Water Rates or some other generally recognized industry standard. The minimum for any property is one EDU. What used to be paragraph nine will now be five, and it will read the projected EDU value or the average daily water usage for a particular property owner will be determined initially by the city and a connection fee collected, and either the city or the property owner may request one subsequent adjustment based on actual daily water usage as measured and recorded by water meter. When the project building is fully occupied, the connection fee may then be adjusted and additions or deductions applied accordingly based on the average of a minimum two consecutive years of water meter billings and other documentation as required by the Department of Infrastructure and Development. The connection fee may be increased based on an average of two consecutive years of water meter billings and other documentation. Any reimbursement of a connection fee shall be without interest. What used to be paragraph ten is now paragraph six, and will read the connection fee waiver for the public sponsored or affordable housing. Paragraph A, public sponsored or affordable housing means any dwelling unit built or financed under a government program regulation or binding agreement that limits for at least ten years the price or rent charge for the unit in order to make the unit affordable to households earning less than sixty percent of the area median income adjusted for man family size. Under subparagraph B, requests for public sponsored affordable housing connection fee waiver are submitted to the Director of Infrastructure and Development for review. After review, the Department of Infrastructure and Development shall submit the waiver request as a resolution for city council approval. Subparagraph C, the resolution for each property will specify that the connection fee waiver is valid for two years with the option to extend the waiver for two one year terms if approved in writing by the Director of Infrastructure and Development prior to the expiration of the term. The Director of Infrastructure and Development may refuse to grant a requested extension if the Director of Infrastructure and Development finds that the property owner is not making good faith efforts to complete the project. The two year D, subparagraph D, the two year waiver begins to run from the time of the signing of the resolution awarding the waiver. Subparagraph E, the waiver is assigned to a project and to the property on which the project is located and cannot be transferred by the recipient. Subsection C, Infrastructure Reimbursement Fee, paragraph one, infrastructure reimbursement fee's purpose, the infrastructure reimbursement fee is intended to recover the cost of system extensions to a service area outside the central system. These facilities will typically be the backbone of a new service area and may include major water and sewer transmission mains, pumping stations, and water storage tanks. The fee shall be charged to properties connecting to water and or sewer extensions outside of the city's core cent or central system. So paragraph two, if a developer, community association, property owner, or other entity requests that the city extend water or sewer service to a geographic area currently not served by the city's water or sewer systems, the city in its sole discretion may elect to serve such a geographic area. In such cases, the entity requesting the provision of water or sewer service shall pay for the entire cost of extending the backbone system of the water or sewer utility to such geographic area, and the city may require the requesting party to oversize the lines, pump stations, storage facilities, or other capital facilities to accommodate future utility customers in or adjacent to the area requesting service. Paragraph three, all such extensions of the backbone system shall be built in city owned easements and or rights of way in accordance with the city's specifications and shall be inspected and require approval by the city. The title to such facilities shall be vested in the name of the city unless the city determines that it is to its advantage to title such facilities in the name of another entity. A portion of or the entire cost less the property owner's facility fee may be reimbursed to the property owner responsible for installing the facilities. The city's reimbursement policy is set forth in section thirteen point oh two point oh nine oh, Extension Reimbursement Policy. The infrastructure reimbursement fee will be will use an incremental method to determine the cost. The incremental method is based solely on the actual incremental sequential cost of property owner projects as they are added to the system. Property owners will oversize facilities in accordance with the city's directives to serve the entire service area. Fees in serviced areas are adjusted for each area served. The incremental method is based on actual costs of backbone infrastructure needed to serve new areas. As a consequence, the more remote the service from the city's core system, the higher the fee because of the greater infrastructure needs. Paragraph six, the infrastructure reimbursement unit shall be calculated by dividing the capital costs of capacity by the incremental capacity of the proposed water or sewer main improvement in gallons, which results in a capital cost per gallon of capacity. At the city's direction, the infrastructure reimbursement unit fee may be calculated by dividing the cap capital costs of capacity by the estimated ultimate flow in the proposed water or sewer main. Such costs may be expressed in terms of capital cost per equivalent dwelling unit, EDUs. This cost shall be defined to be the capital cost per gallon of capacity multiplied by two hundred and fifty. The city reserves the right to charge an infrastructure reimbursement fee for any infrastructure project, the construction of which has been authorized by the city prior to the effective date of the ordinance codified in this chapter, and for which the city has not been fully reimbursed. And then subsection D will read sewer lateral and or water meter tap fee. Paragraph one, sewer lateral and water meter tap fee purpose. This fee is intended to cover the actual cost of tapping the water and sewer mains and providing the lateral service water meter corporation stop, clean out, and stub out for the water and sewer connections if these services are provided by the city. Paragraph two, the cost of this fee will be the actual labor and material costs incurred by the Department of Field Operations to perform the sewer connection or water tap. The fee will be estimated prior to performing the work. And what used to be subparagraph four will now be renumbered as three, and it will read all other tap sizes including combinations of meter sizes and service line size shall be computed by the Department of Infrastructure and Development for that particular application. The cost shall be based on time, equipment, and material involved with a thirty percent markup on direct labor costs and fifteen percent markup on equipment and materials. Thirteen point oh two point oh eight oh, city infill or redevelopment projects. There, the there is a removal of subsections A through D. And then what was E is renumbered as A and will now read property owners with existing water and or sewer service who increase usage for water or sewer shall pay the connection fee adjustment for the additional water and sewer volumes. What was subparagraph F is now B, and it will read commercial or industrial users requiring larger service will be charged for the equivalent number of EDUs used. What was G is now C and will read the projected EDU value, the average daily water usage for a particular property owner will be determined initially by the city and a connection fee collected, and either the city or the property owner may request a subsequent adjustment based on actual daily water usage as measured and recorded by water meter. When the project slash building is fully occupied, the connection fee may then be adjusted and additions or deductions applied accordingly based on the average water usage for a minimum of two consecutive years of water meter billings and other documentation as required by the Department of Infrastructure and Development. The connection fee may be increased based on average on an average of two consecutive years of water meter billings and other documentation. A reimbursement of connection fee shall be without interest. Paragraph D will read permit and connection fee waiver for a single family detached dwelling units. This paragraph one, this section establishes the criteria for the waiver of building permit fees, plan review fees, plumbing fees, mechanical permit fees, and connection fees imposed by the city for the construction of a new single family detached dwelling. All eligible single family parcels shall be recorded as of the effective date of this ordinance. This waiver is for infill properties only. Paragraph two will read the single family detached dwelling proposed to be built shall conform to existing single family detached homes in the neighborhood in which it is to be constructed and meet all required square footage and architectural requirements. Subparagraph three reads the requests, request for single family permit and connection fee waivers are submitted to the Director of Infrastructure and Development for review and internal processing. Paragraph four, the fee waiver is assigned to a project and to the property on which the project is located and cannot be transferred by the recipient. The paragraph five, the fees waived for the construction of a new single family detached dwelling shall apply only to new homes built for and sold to individuals who will resolve reside in the structures as homeowner occupied dwellings. Home ownership will be confirmed through the records of the Maryland Department of Assessments and Taxation upon sale and closing of the real estate transaction and by the homeowner upon demand by the city. The structure shall remain homeowner occupied for a period if not less than five years. Paragraph six, in the event the homeowner ceases to occupy the property or if the property is sold and no longer remains a homeowner occupied structure prior to the end of the five year period. All waived permit fees, utility fees, and other waived fees shall be due and payable to the city. The fees waived as part of this program shall, paragraph seven, the fees waived as part of this program shall be a lien against the real property in question and shall be recorded, charged, and collected as real property taxes owed upon a property in which there is a structure that ceased to be utilized as a homeowner occupied structure during the required five year period. A notice of lien shall be recorded with the city's finance department and also in the land records of Wycomico County if desired by the city detailing the types and amounts of fees that were waived in connection with the design permitting and construction process for each single family home covered by the program described in this resolution. A copy of the notice of the lien shall also be provided to the homeowner, an administrative fee of five hundred dollars shall also be applied and collected if a structure ceases to be utilized as a homeowner occupied structure during the five year period referenced above. Paragraph eight will read the fees to be recovered pursuant to the lien will decline by twenty percent for each full year that the property owner remain remains homeowner occupied, that the property remains homeowner occupied. The administrative fee will not decline pursuant to this five year schedule. Number thirteen point oh two point oh nine oh, Extension Reimbursement Policy, subsection A. Entitled overview will read number one, this policy is intended to reimburse property owners over the time for their proportionate share of the infrastructure reimbursement fee based on their individual investment, which will be indexed using the Consumer Price Index for Urban Areas, the CPI dash U. Paragraph two, the property owner risk will be based on the rate at which the area builds out and the sunset on reimbursement. So paragraph three, the maximum reimbursement to the property owner installing the water and sewer infrastructure will be the entire initial design and construction cost less the infrastructure reimbursement fee. Costs for the number of EDUs to be used by the property owner. Paragraph four, this policy involves full property owner funding of extension projects with no out of pocket costs for the city. Subparagraph or subsection B, reimbursement procedures. Paragraph one will read the Director of Finance through the collection of infrastructure reimbursement fee. Will reimburse the property owner who installed the water and sewer infrastructure as new owners connect to the property owner constructed system as certified by the Director of Infrastructure and Development. Paragraph two, the Director of Finance will reimburse the developer within forty five calendar days of collection of the infrastructure reimbursement fee from the new users. Paragraph three, the Director of Infrastructure and Development shall charge an appropriate administrative fee for record keeping and to recover any handling charges and or payment processing costs. The administrative fee shall be deducted from the reimbursement amount. Paragraph four, the Director of Infrastructure and Development shall calculate the reimbursement amount by using original construction cost figures that will be updated to current costs using the CPI U. Paragraph five, it shall be the original property owner's responsibility to furnish the Director of Infrastructure and Development with contractor invoices or other forms of cost verification to be used by the city for the reimbursement calculation. Documentation of calls shall be provided within six months after project acceptance by the city, or the project owner shall forfeit the right to collect infrastructure reimbursement fee. Subsection C, entitled Sunset Clause. The initial reimbursement period to prop to property owner shall be twenty years with an additional optional period of ten years. Paragraph two, the ten year optional period shall be subject to city council approval. Paragraph three, the city will consider factors such as the magnitude of the project cost, the city's historical growth rate, the projected time period to reach build out within the area served by the water and sewer extension before making the decision to extend the reimbursement period. And that is it.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Boda.
Can I make a motion to amend ordinance number two, six, one, four? To amend it as read.
Have a motion on the floor to amend resolution number two, six, one, four as read. Do I have a second?
April, I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Boda to amend and the second by Ms. Jackson. The first, we will vote on the motion to amend. All those in favor of amending ordinance number two, six, one, four as presented, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda.
Aye.
Ms. Jackson.
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The vote to amend is four to zero. I'll now call the main motion to approve ordinance number two, six, one, four. All those in favor of ordinance number two, six, one, four, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda.
Aye.
Ms. Jackson.
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The vote is four to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two, six, one, five for the second reading.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Jackson. Mrs. Gregory. Mr. Tillman.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. So this is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to amend the fee schedule for FY twenty twenty one. Whereas ordinance twenty five ninety five set fees for FY twenty twenty one, and whereas ordinance twenty six fourteen provides for revised structure and nomenclature, comprehensive connection charges and for and whereas the Department of Infrastructure and Development desires to establish revised fees for the comprehensive connection charges to align with new nomenclature and so that they may be collected in FY twenty twenty one. And whereas the Department of Infrastructure and Development recommends the attached revised fee schedule be amended to ordinance number twenty five ninety five now therefore be enacted and ordained by the city of Salisbury that the fee amounts included in the attached exhibit one amended FY twenty twenty one fee schedule shall be adopted by the city of Salisbury and the amount set forth therein shall supersede the corresponding fee amounts prescribed in the Salisbury Municipal Code until one or more of the said fees are subsequently amended. And be it further enacted and ordained by the city of Salisbury that the ordinance shall take effect upon final fat passes. And be it further enacted and ordained by the City of Salisbury that the ordinance shall take effect upon final fat passage.
Any questions or comments from the council, Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments.
Ms. Jackson.
No questions or comments.
Mrs. Gregory.
No questions or comments.
Hearing now, I'll call the motion, all those in favor. Of ordinance number two, six, one, five for the second reading, please signify by saying aye, Mr. Boda.
Aye.
Ms. Jackson.
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Ordinance number two, six, one, five is approved by a vote of four to zero. I want to take a motion to approve ordinance number two, six, one, six for the second reading.
So move. Second.
Ms. Jackson. Mrs. Gregory. Mr. Tillman.
Thank you. This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with the Bureau of Justice Assistance. For the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of seventy eight thousand, four hundred forty five dollars. And to approve a budget amendment to the FY twenty twenty one grant fund. To appropriate funds for person, personal protective equipment, PPE purchases. Whereas the Bureau of Justice Assistance has an FY twenty coronavirus emergency supplemental funding program. And whereas the purpose of the grant program is provide funding to assist eligible states, local units of government and tribes in preventing. Preparing for and responding to the coronavirus. And whereas the City of Salisbury submitted a grant application to BJA for funding. To offset expenses related to the purchase of personal protective equipment purchased in response to the COVID nineteen crisis. And whereas the BJA has allocated the city funds in the amount of seventy eight thousand, four hundred forty five dollars. And whereas the City of Salisbury must enter into a grant agreement with the BJA defining how the funds must be expended. And whereas all funds shall be used to purchase PPE for the Salisbury Police Department and the Salisbury Fire Department necessary to appropriate. Appropriately respond to the COVID nineteen crisis and whereas section seven dash two nine of Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract. That requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the city council and whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant. Must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of forfeits of the council, the City of Salisbury now therefore be it ordained. By the city council, the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the Mayor Jacob R. Day is authorized to enter into a grant agreement. With the Bureau of Justice Assistance to accept grant funds in the amount of seventy eight thousand, four hundred forty five dollars. And be it further ordained that city's fiscal year twenty twenty one grant fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows. Increase in the DOJ slash BJA grant revenue account by seventy eight thousand, four hundred forty five dollars. And increase in the SPD medical supplies expense account by seventy eight thousand, four hundred forty five dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. At this time, I'll call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number two, six, one, six for the second reading. Please signify by saying aye, Mr. Boda.
Aye.
Ms. Jackson.
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Ordinance number two, six, one, six is approved by a vote of four to zero. I want to take a motion to approve ordinance number two, six, one, seven for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson, Mr. Tillman.
This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore. For the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of five thousand dollars and to approve a budget amendment to the FY twenty twenty one grant fund. To appropriate funds for offsetting personal protective equipment purchases. Whereas the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore has a COVID nineteen emergency response fund and whereas the purpose of the grant program. Is to enable urgent response to evolving community needs as this crisis affects individuals and families, particularly with vulnerable populations in our community. And whereas the City of Salisbury Fire Department submitted a grant application to CFEs for funding to offset expenses related to the purchase of personal. Personal protective equipment purch, uh, purchased in the response to the COVID nineteen crisis. And whereas the CFEs has awarded the city funds in the amount of five thousand dollars. And whereas the City of Salisbury must enter into a grant agreement with CFEs defining how the funds must be expended. And whereas all funds shall be used to offset funds allocated to purchase PPE necessary to appropriately respond to the COVID nineteen crisis. And whereas section seven dash two nine of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires. An expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the city council. And whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of forfeits of the council. Of the City of Salisbury now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the City of Salisbury, Maryland. That Mayor Jacob R. Day is hereby authorized to enter into a grant agreement with the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore to accept grant funds in the amount of five thousand dollars. And be it further ordained that the city's fiscal year twenty twenty one grant fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows. Increase in FY twenty one Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore revenue account by five thousand dollars. Increase the FY twenty one Salisbury Fire Department Medical Supplies Expense Account by five thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Um, I'll now call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number two, six, one, seven for the second reading. Please signify by saying aye, Mr. Boda.
Aye.
Ms. Jackson.
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Resolution number two, six, one, seven is approved by a vote of four to zero. I want to take a motion. Mr. Boda.
Yeah, so moved.
Well, let me read it. The motion is to approve ordinance number two, six, one, eight for the second reading. Mr. Boda made the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Jackson, second. Mr. Tillman.
This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with the Maryland Community Health Resources Commission. For the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of twenty four thousand, seven hundred ninety nine dollars. And to approve a budget amendment to the FY twenty twenty one grant fund to appropriate funds for establishing a telehealth component. To the SWIFT program. Whereas the Maryland Community Health Resources Commission has COVID nineteen virus emergency relief funding. And whereas the purpose of the funding is to assist eligible community health resources to respond to the current pandemic. And whereas the City of Salisbury Fire Department submitted a grant application to the MCHRC. For funding to establish a telehealth component to the SWIFT program for the purpose of providing follow up care remotely for COVID nineteen patients. And whereas the MCHRC has awarded the city funds in the amount of twenty four thousand, seven hundred ninety nine dollars. And whereas the city must enter into a grant agreement with the MCHRC defining how the funds must be expended. And whereas all funds shall be used to establish the aforementioned telehealth component of the SWIFT program. And whereas section seven dash two nine of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract. That requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the city council and whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purposes of this grant. Must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of the council, the City of Salisbury now therefore be it ordained. By the city council, the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the Mayor Jacob R. Day is hereby authorized to enter into a grant agreement. With the Maryland Community Health Resource Commission to establish grant funds to accept grant funds in the amount of twenty four thousand, seven hundred ninety nine dollars. And be it further ordained that city's fiscal year twenty twenty one grant fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows. Increase FY twenty one MCHRC SWIFT revenue account by twenty four thousand, seven hundred ninety nine dollars. Paragraph two, increase the FY twenty one Salisbury Fire Department Equipment Expense Account by seventeen thousand, six hundred twenty four dollars. And increase the FY twenty one SFD Supplies Operating Slash Office Expense Account by seven thousand, one hundred seventy five dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman, questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
Uh, no questions or comments.
Ms. Jackson. Mrs. Gregory.
No questions or comments.
Uh, I would just like to say, uh, to Chief Gladwell, Deputy Chief Gladwell that, uh, we thank. The Fire Department very much for going for these funds. This is, this is a total of the three things over a hundred thousand dollars. And, uh, the SWIFT program is one of the most successful programs that I'm aware of in the fire service, uh, since it's been in existence. And, uh, congratulations on this, we appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Now I'll call the, uh, call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number two, six, one, eight for the second reading. Please signify by saying aye, Mr. Boda.
Aye.
Ms. Jackson. You're muted, April.
Aye.
Thank you, Mrs. Gregory.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Ordinance number two, six, one, eight is approved by a vote of four to zero. I want to take a motion to approve ordinance number two, six, one, nine for the first reading.
So move. Second.
Ms. Jackson. Mrs. Gregory. Mr. Tillman.
Thank you. Uh, this is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury, Maryland pursuant to chapter seventeen point two, two, eight of Title seventeen zoning of Salisbury Municipal Code. And section four point one oh three of the land use article of the Annotated Code of Maryland. For the purpose of amending section seventeen point two, one, two point oh, three oh. To add warehouses for, or storage facilities as a permitted use in shopping centers. Whereas the ongoing application administration enforcement of Title seventeen zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code demonstrates a need for periodic review evaluation amendment. That will keep Title seventeen current. And whereas the mayor and city council may amend Title seventeen zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code pursuant to the authority granted by Maryland Code Land Use. Section four dash one oh one at seek and in accordance with the specific provisions of chapter seventeen point two, two, eight amendments and rezoning of Title seventeen. Of zoning and whereas the mayor and city council requested that Salisbury Planning and Zoning Commission periodically review Title seventeen. And live of existing procedural practices and input from the city council and members of the public. And whereas Barry Van Ness Miller Commercial Real Estate submitted an application to amend the text. Chapter seventeen point oh, excuse me, point two, one, two. Entitled shopping centers to add warehouses or storage facilities as a permitted use in section seventeen point two, one, two point oh, three oh. And whereas a public hearing on the proposed amendment was held by the Salisbury Planning and Zoning Commission accordance with the provisions. Chapter seventeen point two, two, eight of Title seventeen zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code on June eighteenth, two thousand twenty. And whereas the Salisbury Planning Commission did recommend approval of the proposed text amendment to section seventeen point two, one, two point oh, three oh. Now therefore be it enacted ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, Title seventeen zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code is hereby amended as follows. Section seventeen point two, one, two point oh, three oh, entitled permitted uses. It were the under, under the heading permitted uses, the, uh, item L. Uh, which will read as follows. L warehouses or storage facilities will now be a permitted use under that section. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman, questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
Not, I guess just that I think this is gonna help us, uh, better utilize some of the vacant retail space. Uh, that, that we're finding, uh, and to maximize the opportunity for the use of those facilities.
Great, thank you, Ms. Jackson.
I concur with Mayor, um, and I'm all for it, yes.
Thank you. This is Gregory.
Yes.
Thank you. I'll now call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number two, six, one, nine for the first reading. Please signify by saying aye, Mr. Boda.
Aye.
Ms. Jackson.
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Ordinance number two, six, one, nine for the first reading is approved by a vote of four to zero. I would also like to announce at this time that there will be a public hearing that will be held on October twenty sixth. Twenty twenty at six PM for, during our meeting. For, uh. The public to share any information that they have or opinions. I want to take a motion to approve ordinance number two, six, two, zero for the first reading.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Boda. Ms. Jackson. Mr. Tillman.
Thank you. This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend chapter twelve point three six sidewalk cafes. Of the Salisbury Municipal Code to amend the requirements for sidewalk cafes. Whereas the ongoing application administration enforcement in the City of Salisbury Municipal Code demonstrates the need for periodic review evaluation amendment. And whereas the City of Salisbury desires to require all applications for a sidewalk cafe seating area. To include an inspection approval by the city farm marshal to ensure compliance with the city's fire prevention code prior to issuance of a permit. And whereas the City of Salisbury has adopted the Fire Prevention Code with certain local amendments. And whereas there has been a recent increase in the number of sidewalk cafes in the city and the City of Salisbury desires to update the requirements for sidewalk cafes. To ensure better oversight and safety at all sidewalk cafes. And whereas the City of Salisbury would like to amend the chapter to update the requirements and process by which the sidewalk cafes are permitted. Now therefore be it enacted ordained by the City of Salisbury. The chapter thirteen point three six of the Salisbury Municipal Code be amended as follows. Chapter thirteen point three six entitled sidewalk cafes. Under definitions, A sidewalk cafe means any area situated on a public sidewalk. Where food, refreshments and or alcoholic beverages are sold by a restaurant, delicatessen and or ice cream shop for public consumption. At tables or counters located on the public sidewalk fronting on the operating, affronting the operating establishment. Subparagraph B, street fixtures means physical objects located within a public sidewalk such as streetlights, trees, signs. Parking meters and planters. Thirteen point three six point oh, two, oh, permit, permit required under subsection A. It will read a person shall not construct, maintain, use or operate a sidewalk cafe on a public sidewalk without first obtaining a permit. As provided for in this chapter. Subparagraph B will read an application for a sidewalk cafe permit shall be made to the Director of Infrastructure and Development. On forms provided by the director. The application shall be made by the owner of the food service facility establishing the sidewalk cafe. In addition, an application may be required to be filed with a historic district commission. The application for use of the public right of way for sidewalk cafe should be from a food service facility located on private contiguous property. In the event the outdoor cafe area is not contiguous to the food service facility, it must be located within twenty five feet of the storefront of the. Associated food service facility and adjoining property owners and businesses will be notified of the permit application. The city may not be able to grant exclusive use of the sidewalk cafe. If there are additional food service facilities within twenty five feet of the business applying for a sidewalk cafe permit. Subsection C, a sidewalk cafe permit shall be for one year from March of each year until the last day of the following February. An annual fee of fifty dollars shall be paid with the permit application. Subsection D will read sidewalk cafe permits are not transferable in the event of the transfer of the ownership of the food service facility. The new owner must reapply for a permit. Paragraph E, the city may suspend or revoke a permit for violations of this section. Conditions of the permit or other applicable city, county, state or federal laws. Subsection F will read. Permit T is required to make any and all repairs to damage caused to the city right of way. And sidewalk cafe at the expiration of the permit period. Under subsection twelve point three, six point oh, three oh, operating standards. Subparagraph A reads no part of the sidewalk cafe area shall encroach upon any part of the sidewalk frontage. On any adjacent premises right of way or alley. Subparagraph B, a sidewalk cafe shall comply with all building, health, safety, fire, zoning. And environmental standards applicable to such uses. Subparagraph C shall read a sidewalk cafe shall not sell, serve or allow consumption of alcoholic beverages on its sidewalk. Without first obtaining the required license from the Wycomico County Liquor Board. Alcoholic beverages shall be served on the sidewalk cafe only in conjunction with the service of food. A public eating establishment shall not sell, serve or allow consumption of alcoholic beverages at a sidewalk cafe. After the establishment's closing time. Subparagraph D, the following are provided in the cafe area accumulated trash. And refuse, storage, advertising banners, outdoor entertainment, music and loudspeakers. Uh, subparagraph E, all cafe seating shall be removed from the cafe or stored in the area. No later than an hour after the business closes daily. Subparagraph F, the affected portion of the sidewalk shall be cleaned by the owner of the sidewalk cafe. Each business day that sidewalk cafe business is in operation. Subparagraph G, a sidewalk cafe must comply with any conditions imposed by the city in connection with the issuance of a sidewalk cafe permit. Subparagraph H, sidewalk cafe must close at the same time as the permitted business. Permit T must ensure that all patrons do not linger or loiter in sidewalk cafe once the business is closed. Permittee must ensure that all patrons do not linger or loiter in sidewalk cafe once the business is closed. Uh, section twelve point three, six point oh, four, oh, design standards. The permittee shall allow a minimum of five feet of uninstructed area for pedestrian foot passage between the outer edge of the sidewalk curb or designated sidewalk area and the area occupied by the permittee. Sidewalk cafe furniture, furniture shall be simple in character, constructed of wood and or painted metal. The only furniture permissible are tables, chairs and umbrellas which are intended for outdoor use. All portions of umbre- of umbrellas must be contained entirely within the seating area and must have at least seven feet of clearance over the sidewalk when extended. The only wording or advertisement permissible on umbrellas is the name of the restaurant associated with a sidewalk cafe. Subsection C, a scaled sketch plan shall be filed with the permit application showing all street fixtures affected including property lines fronting the sidewalk in which the sidewalk cafe will be located, sidewalks, street curb lines, lightings, trees, planters, parking meters, street signs, fire hydrants and proposed location of the outdoor cafe and enclosure. Any plans to anchor the enclosures in the public sidewalk must be approved by the Department of Infrastructure and Development. D, railings or fencing for the enclosed areas shall be approved by the Salisbury Historic District Commission and Department of Infrastructure and Development if applicable. Subparagraph E, the sidewalk cafe seating area shall be inspected and approved by the city fire marshal for compliance with the city's fire prevention code. Paragraph F, no portion of the sidewalk cafe including furniture and fixtures shall obstruct view and or access to hydrants, streetlights, street signs, telephones, mailboxes, transit stops or any other public service facility on the sidewalk area or adjacent street. Subsection G, no sidewalk cafe may be permanently located within sidewalk area except that the sidewalk cafe boundaries must be delineated by the use of barriers such as railings or fencing. Any barrier must be approved and permitted by the Department of Infrastructure and Development and portion of the barriers above forty-two inches in height must provide sightlines into or through the sidewalk area and must be secured in a manner that is acceptable to the Department of Infrastructure and Development. Subparagraph H, all portions of the canopies must be contained entirely within seating area and must have at least nine feet of clearance over the cafe area when extended. The only wording or advertisement permissible on a canopy is the name of the restaurant associated with the sidewalk cafe. Canopies must be reviewed and approved by the City of Salisbury Infrastructure and Development Department, Historic District Commission and Fire Marshal. Sub, subparagraph I, any proposed alteration to the sidewalk cafe after the permit is issued must be reviewed and approved by the City of Salisbury Infrastructure Development Department, Historic District Commission and City Fire Marshal. Section thirteen point three, six point oh, five, oh, infrastructure and indemnification sidewalk cafe permittee shall fully ensure indemnify and hold harmless City of Salisbury and its officers, agents and employees from and against any and all claims and damages in any way arising out of the acts or emissions of the permittee or the employees in construction, operation, maintenance, use, placement or condition of the sidewalk cafe. An applicant for a sidewalk cafe permit shall provide proof of $500,000 premises liability insurance before a permit may be issued or renewed under this chapter. Violations and penalties provisions in this chapter shall be enforced by the City of Salisbury building official or his or her designee. A person who continues to violate this chapter after written notice to take corrective action is guilty of municipal infraction and shall be fined $250 for the first offense and shall be fined up to $500 for each subsequent offense. Each day a violation exists shall be a separate offense. In addition, the building official may revoke or suspend a permit issued pursuant to this chapter after repeated infractions in a twelve-month period after repeated infractions. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Questions or comments? Mr. Boda?
Yeah, after discussing this last week and then looking over, I have a couple of questions. First, what about businesses that are already utilizing uh, these cafes or the sidewalk cafe areas? And what about, well, if anybody can answer that one first, are they being grandfathered in? Do they have to suspend operations and then apply now for this or how is that working for those businesses?
The man is still on or Laura, you, you gonna handle it, Laura?
Yeah, I can handle it. Um, so this will be an annual permit, so they'll be required to renew. Um, I believe Mojo's originally had this years ago and then I think it kind of um, fell off, but we've informed them that it will be an annual license that they'll have to renew. They'll have to get the approvals for the current design as it stands. Um, which I believe they already have some of them in place. Um, I, I, I'll have to check on Mogans. I think they have approvals as well. So this is just kind of formalizing that they're they have the exclusive use of that space on an annual basis.
Well, there's, there's two there by Mojo's. There's one in front of Angelo's and then there's one in front of Mojo's, but I know that Angelo's is letting them use it for dining. What's, is that gonna allow Mojo or, or are they still gonna continue with that for Mogans?
So we did not have the, the formal agreement with them to use that space. I think they got like approvals for the design of it. Um, but not the use of it. So I think they went in front of Historic District. They submitted plans to infrastructure and development, but it didn't. It's hard to explain, but it didn't grant the exclusive use of that space. So there are a few other spaces, um, by like Old Town that they allow anyone to use it. Sushi to Camp Pie and Salisbury Coffee, they allow anyone to use it, but if Mogans is looking for exclusive use of those spaces, they would apply for this permit.
So what about Sushi Dave Camp Pie if they wanted to use that space for dining?
If they wanna use it for dining, they can submit the application. Um, and there's a provision in the amendments for the legislation that we would notify any other food service facilities within a twenty-five foot radius. Um, so if that's the case, then we would notify Salisbury Coffee and see if they're okay with it and see if they're open to some sort of partnership where Salisbury Coffee can use it during the day. Sushi Camp Pie can use it at night. Um, but we did include a provision that says we may not be able to grant the exclusive use of a space. So really, we're we're hoping that situation doesn't come up, but we're, we're gonna account for it and have conversations with those business owners.
All right. Thank you. All the questions I have right now.
Okay. Ms. Jackson?
No questions.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions.
Thank you. Uh, the only comment I have is that the reason for this is to make sure that we have, we encourage first of all people to eat locally. Uh, second, it gives the opportunity to, uh, the restaurants uh, to expand their ability to, to have more turns, which is economically beneficial to them. Uh, and we like some consistency to make sure that we keep the look of downtown. So this formalizes that process and I think it's a, I certainly think it's a good move. I would also like just to clarify, cause there was some, there was some confusion. Uh, this is the first reading tonight. Uh, we will have the second reading where it becomes law at the next council meeting. Unless it's voted down. Uh, so it takes two readings and, and we've, we'll vote on the first reading this evening. Okay? If there's no other questions, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two, six, two, zero for the first reading, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Ordinance number two, six, two, zero is approved for the first reading by a voter four to zero. That concludes all the items on the agenda. Uh, Mr. Kitchrow, do we have any requests from anybody that's on the call for a public comment that relates to the items on the agenda tonight?
Mr. Council President, I have nothing that is in the chat. If any of the other individuals who have joined us have a comment, you can unmute yourself now and state your name for the record. Looks like we're good to go, President.
All right, hearing none. I'll now, yes, for the council comments. Mr. Boda?
Hey, uh, so I wanna thank the Fire Department for all the work on, on appropriating some of these grants. Uh, some of these are very important. Uh, and like President Deese said earlier, the SWIFT program has been extraordinarily uh, successful program and then, and I wanna keep, you know, like everybody else, keep supporting this program. I wanna thank the Fire Department for, uh, working really hard on, on acquiring, uh, those grants. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boda. Ms. Jackson?
Again, I concur with Mayor on the grants. Appreciate all the hard work that the Fire Department has done. Um, continuing to do so, that's the last money that the city has to put out. Um, but also, um, as far as the COVID census, everybody be safe. Continue to be safe, mask up, social distance and senses, please. If you haven't filled out your senses, please get them done. Ten questions, ten minutes, ten years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Mrs. Gregory?
I just wanna remind everybody the deadline to register to vote is October thirteenth. It's very important that you make your voice heard uh, for the 2020 election. Uh, the deadline to request a mail-in ballot uh, to stay safe with COVID, um, is October twentieth. So, so please make sure you're registered. You can check your registration and everything at elections dot Maryland dot gov. So please make sure you're registered. If you're not, you can register online and then you can also request your ballot.
Thank you, Mrs. Gregory. Um, my wife actually received her ballot in the mail today. Um, I did not. I don't know if that means anything, but, uh, hopefully I will get mine soon. Uh, but Ms. Blake is not here today, so I will do my normal second to the fact that we still need blood. If you're able to give blood, please sign up and do so. Uh, as Mrs. Gregory said, the census and Ms. Jackson said, the census is important. Um, we, we cannot afford to lose any money that we've already have. And right now I believe we're still a little behind as I looked yesterday. Uh, so we, we only have a few days, which is the twenty-ninth, I believe.
I think it's the thirtieth.
Thirtieth. So we got, we gotta move and hopefully we can, uh, we can fill the, fill the numbers. So, uh, thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Kitchrow, do you have anything on behalf of, uh, the acting mayor?
Um, everything was said. Um, the census census, I think, is in the first and foremost in everybody's mind. So the last minute people just echoing the comments of council and then follow that up with registering and making sure we vote. Do your duty as a citizen and, um, let your voice be heard and your vote be counted. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Kitchrow. Thank you, everybody, uh, for participation tonight and, uh, be safe, wear your mask and we'll see you soon. This meeting is adjourned.